Good evening, my name is Sandra Fritz, I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of February 5th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Shrewsbury Media Connection through the work of John McDonald, and it will be rebroadcast between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on February 12th. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to speak this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so, please contact the committee and we'd be happy to add you to the agenda. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anybody have anything this evening?
Yep.
Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Wanted to first thank all of our educators who participated in our first early release day of the year yesterday. There were a whole variety of topics that educators were working on related to our strategic goals and was able to interact with a variety of different folks over at Sherwood yesterday in particular, and their enthusiasm and focus was commendable. We know these days are challenging sometimes for families relative to getting childcare and whatnot and sort of understand that from a parent's perspective, but these are really critically important times for us to make sure we're providing appropriate professional development time for our staff. Along those lines, it was our first day of the year because our original first day was snowed out due to some inclement weather. And we did announce to the community today that we've been able to work the schedule so that that date will be made up on Monday, March 23rd. That is different than typical, typically we have them on Tuesday afternoons, but the way the MCAS schedule in the spring was working and a variety of other commitments, Monday, March 23rd will be when that makeup day will happen. That, we'll certainly continue to communicate that to make sure there's plenty of forewarning for families with regard to childcare and as well as our educators to make arrangements for their schedules. Do want to mention that it's National School Counselors Week. The school counseling department, which many of us would have known in our time in school as guidance counseling, they do an outstanding job for us at Shrewsbury High School and want to recognize the excellent work that they do, given that this is the week commemorating their work. Also want to share good news that our Shrewsbury High School esports team that is connected to the League of Legends competition won its third consecutive state title at Patriot Place at Gillette Stadium this past Saturday. And congratulations to them. And the team that was set to compete in the other competition, which is known as Rocket League, had to have their competition postponed because I guess there was a worldwide server problem with that particular competition. So that's to be determined, we wish them luck when the competition does take place and congratulations to the players and then coaches involved. And finally, I just wanted to make mention, obviously, in the news, there's a lot of information about the coronavirus. It's something that we've had a couple of inquiries about from parents. We certainly are monitoring the situation. We will continue to follow and our nurses in particular and our Director of Nursing, Noel Freeman, looking at what guidance the Centers for Disease Control, the Mass Department of Public Health, the West Department of Public Health are providing to us and making sure that, we continue to emphasize that good prevention practices for any kind of illness, particularly during this time of year. It's a much more likely situation that someone will be exposed to influenza, the flu, for example, but we'll continue to emphasize those things. One impact is that we did have our ongoing exchange with China where every other year we typically have Shrewsbury High School students travel to China that was scheduled for this coming April school vacation. That trip unfortunately, understandably, has been canceled. And it's unfortunate, obviously, for the students who are looking forward to that, but the students and their families certainly understand, given the circumstances. So we'll continue to monitor the situation, if we need to communicate anything specific, we certainly will do that with the community. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you. First, our exact timed scheduled appointment is the Sherwood Middle School Maker Space presentation, and we have a group of students here if you'd like to come forward. And I know we also have Sarah Matthews, grade five teacher at Sherwood Middle School, and Herlay Clegg, who is the media specialist.
I'm very proud to introduce these folks. As you know, when we worked on the portrait of the graduate, we answered the question about what we want our graduates to have as skills and dispositions. And ever since, we've been thinking about, so what does that look like along the way? And tonight, you're going to hear a partial answer to that from our staff and our students. And we're going to take you from five years old to grade five. So I'm going to cede the floor to them and just know you're in for something special.
Good evening, Dr. Sawyer and School Committee. Thank you for inviting us here to tell you a little bit about our new Maker Space initiative. Also, thank you to our students and their families. Thank you so much for being here today. Before we get started with our presentation, Ms. Clegg and I just wanted to take a moment to thank Lizza Rivera, who's our technology guru at Sherwood. She's been instrumental in getting this project off the ground. She does a variety of things, including moving furniture around in the library, brainstorming with us, sort of pushing us to think a little bit more globally and outside the box, and also helping us with the video that you'll see in a minute. So she is, you know, such a great resource and we want to thank her. So, moving on, what is a Maker Space? A Maker Space is simply a space to make. The space is designed to accommodate and promote a hands-on creative mindset. The idea of a Maker Space is based on the constructivist approach where students are learning by doing and they have student voice and agency, which I'm sure you'll hear about in a little bit. It promotes a collaborative, inclusive environment, which also encourages design thinking. So our role as educators is to be a guide by the side. It's our hope that the student excitement and momentum of our new Maker Space will help us develop into a place where all students and teachers have access to a variety of directed learning challenges and open-ended tasks, whether they be high-tech or low-tech, and which will inevitably target and strengthen our steam critical thinking skill. So that, I'll turn it over to Hillary.
So if you think of the example of an artist, when you see a painting, there's a lot that goes into it that's not immediately visible. You need a place to work, access to a rich array of materials, time to experiment and practice techniques, space to store works in progress, and room for creativity. So if we think of our Maker Space as a studio, those are the things that we are hoping to provide for our students. When you hear our students speak, one of the things that I think will really come through is just how much excitement there is about the Maker Space. Students come in in the mornings or during their enrichment blocks, during flexible time in the classroom individually. But then it's also because our Maker Space carts are on wheels, teachers will check them out and bring them to the classrooms for a variety of projects or for just a kind of bonus period at the end of the day. We're still in the early stages of this initiative, but when you come into the media center, you can really see kind of how much buzz and excitement there is among the students for this. They all really like being there and they really get creative. Right now, most of our materials are really simple cardboard, recyclables, crafting supplies, wheels, dowels, et cetera, but our kids create amazing things with them. We also have some kind of carefully selected kits and supplies, like you see up here, that are meant to give our students a taste of some kind of STEAM activities so that it might inspire some curiosity and interest down the line. You'll see our students talk about the many different ways that they use our materials, both with specific directed tasks and with the freedom to explore. And we know that both of these are really valuable ways for our students to engage their creativity and critical thinking. So...
Okay, moving on. You'll hear from the students soon, I promise. So, design thinking is basically a continuous process where students and adults sometimes are trying to solve a problem. So, we think about, you know, why do we want to solve this problem and how are we going to do it? So, at the beginning, there's some brainstorming going on and then, right? And then, from there, we're making a prototype and moving on to testing it and revising it. And you'll see here, we revised it and then students revised it and revised it again. So, just coming back full circle. So, sometimes the process happens organically, which you might see in a little bit with our friends from five grade. Just sort of evolves the process and, yeah, so it's really exciting. So, before we hear from our lovely students here, we put together a very quick video of students at Sherwood about why the Maker Space is important to them. So, I think you'll enjoy it and we'll, let's see if it works.
Good evening. We would like to share a quick video of how we use the Sherwood Maker Space.
Something I like to do is that I like to get a bunch of people all together and like just put an ID in there and try to make those extravagant things with those devices.
I like how it improves your cooperation with other people and like, and all the ways that you can work with everyone else.
I love how it's such a calm space in that you can really make your imagination come to life. You can literally use most of the materials in here and make anything you want.
I like how everybody can join that project and they can really do it.
We really like it because like we have so much of like big pieces and because like it doesn't block.
I like it because they can like use everything you have there and sometimes you can take stuff over and it just fills up your creativity.
And I like it because you can use your natural picture and create what you want.
I like to build with the paperclips and the wheels and the cardboard.
I've made things out of paperclips before.
Actually, I love paperclips because they cling onto each other and you can make like different patterns, shapes, and different things out of one paperclip.
Sometimes I just build things, other times I actually make something. Like once I made a scroll.
So, our class came down and we used the brainwaves and we would make this like gigantic line that curved all the way around the computer and we would measure it.
Jeffrey's.
Seventeen Jeffreys.
Seventeen Jeffreys.
Seventeen, eighteen Jeffreys.
Eighteen Jeffreys.
Nineteen Jeffreys.
Twenty Jeffreys.
Twenty Jeffreys.
Twenty Jeffreys.
Well, she told us that we're going to use the Maker Space and we can be creative to make anything. And so, we had to come up with an idea. It was very broad so we could all have different things. We had to make something that was kind of like, something that would like maybe be a real-life solution that could work. So, there was all different things. There was some, there was someone who made a ramp with a curb. There was someone who made necklace, a necklace.
I was with a necklace.
Out of beads and stringers. We tried to make something where when a play or ball fell onto a platform, it would make a fan turn on.
And so, they're building a structure like in all of your pencil on your desk. Materials: cardboard, paper, paper, glue, pipe, and pipe corners.
We created this prototype for storing pencils. So, first, we started off with this thing, which we thought it was a good idea. So, then we just, so we wanted to kind of add on to it because this, we realized it can only hold pencils, it can't, it doesn't have space for others. So, we decided to make something like this, which has many holders so you can keep more stuff in.
And it also has a box surrounding it so that it's more sturdy and the pencils won't pull out. These pencil holders, they really help us like, so then we don't have to keep tugging out our pencil cases out of our desk. We can just put them on our desk and we can get our materials faster, it's easier.
The Maker Space is a nice way to calm down and calm yourself down and just relax for a few minutes.
The Maker Space is a great, a great place for the kids to come to enjoy different sensory materials and get released outside of their academic setting that we have in the ELC.
Um, so I think that the Maker Space is relaxing because if I do like a bunch of like social studies or math, my brain just like, it gets full and just stretched out. And if I just take a break for a couple minutes and do something like Maker Space, it just like slows and calms my mind down.
All right, so time to hear from our student. Nope, not that again. Okay, so Exploration Sid is going to introduce himself and then talk a little bit about open-ended exploration.
Hi, my name is Sid and I'm on five grade. And sometimes the kids go to the Maker Space when they have extra time and their teachers say they can go. There's a lot of materials there, so you can look around and make whatever you want with the materials that are there. If you don't have any ideas, you can look at the Maker Space book. Sometimes you may have a problem that you were trying to solve and you can try to solve it. If you make something out of cardboard, paper, or glue, you can take it home too. What I did there was I made a creative domino track with domino stairs and a large tube. I was trying to see if I could make the dominos go up the stairs and then get down the tube. You can always just be creative and relax at the Maker Space.
My name is Reagan Clifford and I'm on five grade at Sherwood Middle School. I think that the Maker Space is a calm and peaceful place because it allows you to create anything that you could imagine and you can express yourself and come up with new ideas. It's a great way to take a break after a long day at school, like filled with learning and just sort of rest your mind and come up with new ideas. It's separate from the classroom and it provides different materials. You can piece things together and make artwork and you can create things that you might not think of much at first and then turn the small idea into something bigger. The possibilities are endless and you can feel free to make anything. You can challenge yourself to make something epic or you can choose to doodle and do something simple to relax for a few minutes.
Hi, my name is Chanelle and I'm on five grade at Sherwood Middle School. We observed that it was a pain to keep normal pencil cases, like this one, in our desks because they were too big. Our solution was to build a structure that can hold objects like pencils, pens, markers, et cetera, in a compact space. Our classmates Tyler and Colton built a prototype, built a prototype of the pencil boxes. We thought it was a great idea, but the only problem with the design was that they were really small and couldn't hold many materials. We improved this idea by adding more holders and making the pencil boxes a little bigger so you can add more objects. These holders are really helpful because you can take the supplies on your desk without having to pull them out.
Hi, my name is Shamani and I'm also on five grade. Now, almost everyone on our team has one of these pencil holders on their desk and it's turned into a popular item, not only on our team, but on a few neighboring teams as well. We have an order box and a beautifully drawn logo by Dia and even a small website. It makes our classes on team go a lot smoother and they're really convenient. Just a few weeks ago, before we made this, our teachers were getting frustrated with us since we weren't ready to learn and it took so much time looking for our pencils in our messy pencil boxes. And it all summed up and reduced that much of our academic learning time. With this invention, the pencil box is right on your desk. So, I have no trouble just to reach and get a pencil instead of going through the trouble of digging in my messy pencil case.
Hi, my name is Dia and I'm on five grade. We think this prototype is really good and working really well, but our classmates have been giving us feedback and one of the biggest problems was that this pencil holder keeps falling off of the desk, leaving the pencils scattered everywhere. So now, we are working on a prototype three that can solve this problem of the pencil scattering. One of our ideas is sticking the pencil holders with Velcro on our desk so it doesn't fall down.
Very cool. Yeah. Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for questions.
Questions or comments?
Great presentation. I really like the creativity, I like the, you know, collaboration that this learning, you know, fosters. And you talk about design thinking and adults actually do do this. Actually, next week on a business trip, we're going to be doing what we call a design sprint and we're going to define and design something that solves a problem, just like you did here. And I like what Reagan said, in terms of resting your mind and having something different to do other than the day-to-day classwork. That's exactly how I feel about next week. I won't be, I'll be closing down my email and we'll spend the day just focusing on solving a problem. So, so great work, this is excellent.
Lindsey?
Thank you so much for being here, it's really exciting. People in my house make lots of stuff with cardboard, so I understand. Can you tell me, in your, when do you get the time to go down there? And is that something that you bring back to the classroom? Like is it, do you maybe go, ever go to the Maker Space to do some science work? Or how does that work?
Um, well, sometimes we go at the beginning of the day, like when we come, if in case we come like early to school, we can go to the Maker Space and sometimes our teachers will allow us to go at the end of the day. Sometimes in between, like our teacher, Ms. Verzi, she sometimes lets us go and like, when we, when we, uh, when we finish our work, yeah. And we can like, sometimes if we, like, if we have enrichment, like on BCO days, we can bring like the Maker Space to our classroom and work in our classroom and solve those problems. Since it's literally on wheels.
Oh, very cool. Can I ask a question of the teachers? So, are we, it's really exciting and interesting. Are we thinking about how to support teachers in terms of, like, what pieces of curriculum? In particular, they can tie, they can tie in more practically to like...
Yeah, so that's something we've been kind of starting to do slowly because it's still fairly new. We have on Schoology a folder with Maker Space resources and then we've also found that, you know, some teachers will use it more for kind of a brain break, like Reagan was talking about, and some teachers will use it for a more directed exercise and we're trying to build kind of a library of templates that teachers can use for those things.
Thank you so very much. Jason?
Great presentation. What are sort of the restrictions on materials that, is it just anything that's there? Where are the materials coming from? What, I mean, I'm seeing, I'm seeing tubes, cardboard, tape, I presume, glue. What are some of the other types of things we might not be seeing that are, there are some options to work with?
Good, we have snap circuits, we have, I'm trying to think, what, the Spheros, we have...
Legos.
Legos, Azovas, Legos we got from the high school, which was nice, recycling. We have a variety, do you want to speak to some of that?
We've got a lot of different kind of like crafting supplies and recyclable materials that a lot of parents will donate. Mr. Kelly will put in his weekly email a call for, like, that's where we've got all of the paper towel rolls, for example. We, you know, when we initially set it up, we purchased some kinds of materials to kind of start out and some, we have some consumable materials and some non-consumables, so those are all labeled with little red and green stickers, whether you, it's a make and leave or a make and take.
Okay.
And also, yeah, just the simple beads, you could say they're just beads, but the challenge last week was to try to make your initials using binary code and just teaching them a little bit about what that is and, you know, a series of zero and one. So, you know, even though they're just, seems like they're basic materials, we're creating challenges that, you know, are trying, you know, connected to the curriculum as much as we can, but that's certainly a goal for this year and acquiring more materials.
Thank you.
Thank you, great presentation, as always. We love when we have students come and talk because I think it makes it real for us. We really understand and I know I've had meetings in the media center and we would see the space and we would see all the things and, you know, kind of look around. What did, what did the students do? So it's great to have that connection. I love that you're talking about prototypes and you kind of got a little marketing thing set up and students are coming and I think that's wonderful in fifth grade that you're looking. I mean, you'd have to be as old as Mr. Wensky to do it. You guys are already doing it.
Business cards too, is that right?
Oh, my goodness.
Wow, that's good because I want to buy that.
Excellent, good for you.
We have business cards.
Perfect.
Good, you can pass those out to us later.
Mr. Pallow and I were just talking about how we are always losing our pens here and we're not very, we have to share a lot, so maybe we just need to designate it in space here.
Do you want to show them what you brought, show them?
I can use that too, this is really outstanding. Personalized and everything, I think that this is, if we were, you know, venture capitalists would be funding your project, your new company, for sure. No doubt about it.
Anything further?
Sir, I want to thank and commend the students for a great presentation, outstanding. It really gave us a sense of what you're gaining from the Maker Space and the ability to use that and the way that you're going through the iterative process and design thinking is really very sophisticated for students of your grade level, which is really terrific. And I certainly want to commend Mrs. Matthews. I know the school committee was there recently where she was honored with the John P. Collins Award for Excellence by the Shrewsbury Education Foundation, does an outstanding job teaching at Sherwood, has for many years. Ms. Clegg is newer to the faculty as our media specialist, the energy. I've oftentimes had the pleasure of being at meetings during the initial part of the school day at the media center at Sherwood and the enthusiasm of students who are coming in not only to try to check out and use the Maker Space but who are connecting with Ms. Clegg around what books to read and the book circulation has been skyrocketing at Sherwood thanks to her promoting good children's literature and young adult literature. And so, it's really become a very vibrant hub of learning in our, in our school. So we really appreciate you sharing this with us and I certainly want to mention that when Mrs. Clodder had the opportunity to try to provide some funding from district sources last year to get this off the ground, that was a really wise investment, I think. So, congratulations. We do have certificates for each of the students. So if you want to bring your business cards up, we'll give you a certificate to honor you for your presentation tonight. You come on, come on up and you can shake the hand of the committee and receive your certificate, so thank you. All right, let me take that card. All right, and your name is? Great job. There you go. Nice work. There you go.
Thank you so much for being here.
And they also have a website.
They have a website.
Website as well, yeah? All right, next on the agenda, we are going to have an update on the Beal School building project. And here tonight we have, uh, Walter Hartley. He's from PMA Associates, our project manager. As well as Natalie Gabriel from, um, Lamaron Pagano. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. All right, um, I think we've been in front of you guys for a little while here. So we have some information, quite a bit of information, good information. Um, so I'll jump right into it. Uh, where we are in the project, uh, I know it looks like we are close to the end, saying that we're in mod seven in the MSBA's process. I was just kind of sketching it out. Um, we are still about two years, two and a half years from final closeout with the MSBA. At least, um, that can't happen until ten, uh, until three to four months after the ten-month warranty walk, which is after substantial completion, which is scheduled for May of twenty twenty-one. I know it seems like we've been going at it for a while, but, um, there's quite a bit left. But we're in the heart of construction now. So I don't know if every, anyone's driven by, uh, recently. Um, but abatement demolition complete, Lake Street realignment complete. I hope everyone's enjoying that. Being able to drive through there again. Uh, concrete footings, foundations, retaining walls. Uh, probably closer to eighty-five percent now, since I made this for the building committee, uh, for the committee. Um, structural steel, sixty percent complete. Uh, that is including detailing. Uh, if it were just erection of the steel, we'd be closer to ninety, ninety-five percent complete. Underground plumbing, about thirty percent complete, electrical about five percent, and site drainage about ten percent complete. So those are really the main trades that are on site right now. Um, we've had some air vapor barrier work done on the foundation walls, which has been backfilled after its inspections. So just wanted to show some pictures before the video. So a picture of what Lake Street looked like, uh, in about September, October, and then what it looks like now. I think that is September, October, I'm sorry. Uh, this is a picture of the retaining wall that divides, uh, the front section of the building from the back section of the building, uh, where it goes from slab on grade to slab on deck. Uh, it's about twenty-one feet high. And, uh, what you see is the air vapor barrier going up that wall to keep the moisture off of that wall to ke- help, uh, better insulate. And just, uh, run the water down the foundation wall to a, uh, underdrain that takes it around the building and away from the building. Uh, here you have a little bit of underground plumbing, uh, that's been going in. So this is in B building, so the nor- southwest section of the building, uh, which is where the main activities start for all the rotations. So they start in B building, go to C building and work up front to A building. And then this is a picture of the steel erection and the crane that's been on site for one month. Uh, one month ago today was our first delivery of steel. And I think we're gonna get our last delivery of steel this week, so. And then just a picture of how the footings progress through. So they build the forms, uh, dig out the area, pour the concrete, and peel it off and put the fund, put the, uh, moisture barrier up or the vapor barrier and the filter fabric. One second. Um, and I just want to have Natalie provide a little bit of a back, or update on the design portion of what's going on in the background of the design team.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Um, we just had a few other updates to mention to you all tonight, um, just some other smaller pieces that are ongoing. Um, one thing that we're starting to work on is a collaboration with Shrewsbury High School. Um, it's been in the works for a little bit, but we're doing a research project for the history display for the new, um, main lobby. It's gonna be at Beal. And, um, we've got some interested students, a little over forty, um, we found out last week. So there's a lot of interest. And, um, Mike Purnin, the town historian, is gonna have an advisory role. Uh, LPA will be, you know, checking in with them. And mainly, the students will be doing their own research on existing Beal, the new Beal site. Um, you know, Major Howard Beal, and there's so many topics. So they're gonna get a big, uh, a, a big, um, kind of, uh, bunch of research that we can use for the final display. So that'll be great. Um, the furniture fair, um, was held yesterday, uh, at the existing Beal school. Um, Chris Girardi was a big part of getting that, helping get that together with, um, Mindy, our interior designer. The furniture for the new school, those options are on display for a couple of weeks. And Chris is going to be working on getting feedback from the staff, um, in the next couple of weeks as well. So there's a lot of fun furniture that is gonna be super functional for the new school and flexible. So, um, we're excited about that as well. And then, um, the last thing I just wanted to mention is we're continuing to work on our lead certification. And that's going very well. Um, we're gonna start meeting with Fontaine and the sustainability consultant, the green engineer, starting tomorrow. And we're gonna have monthly meetings to, um, stay organized with our lead documentation through the rest of the construction phase. And, um, we're in a really good place with that. So, um, that's going well also.
And, uh, courtesy of the Shrewsbury Building Department, we have an update, uh, flyover for you guys that took place. Oh, missed the date. One twenty-six. So you, right here you have B building, uh, classroom wing, uh, that's also B building. And now you're starting to see, uh, s- what we call C building, uh, and the erection going up. So basically, B building is entirely decked now. And that's that white silver material you see, the roof and the, the slab on gra- uh, slab on deck. Uh, and they're moving towards the front of the building. Uh, C building is mostly complete with the, uh, decking. What the steel ironworkers do following completion of the erection is they go back and, uh, uh, TC, torch, uh, torque control, all of the bolts into the beams. So they set two or three of them, out of five to ten of them in every beam. Then they go back and level all of them and get all the beams. And they use a special tool that actually snaps the bolts, uh, into place. Uh, and it, you know that you have the right torque on it because the bolt snaps off and they all fall to the ground. So we have inspectors that go up and make sure that every single one of them is in. So you see a little bit of footing and pier work. Uh, that's the front canopy right there, those three in the, in the very front that look like, uh, two tunnels. And then this is the, uh, retaining wall, uh, loading dock area over on the side right here. The crane has moved from that position up to the front of the building. He's done in the back of the building, so you can see him up front. And I will say, we, uh, I think I mentioned it, I think the school committee was made aware. But, uh, steel erection, just erection was not, was scheduled to be complete in sometime in March. And it's looking like they're gonna be complete next week. Uh, they, steel guys will still be there for probably the better part of a month after. But there won't be any more beams going up. They'll be working on detailing. Um, they have quite a bit of work. But to get the building up and get the crane out of there is their main goal at first and then go back and run. Before I jump into any of the budget, which I know everyone's excited about, um, did anyone have any questions on the construction scene? Yep?
Just a quick question. You mentioned the steel.
Yep.
Ahead of schedule. Is that a result of like the mild winter we've had, like ahead of schedule?
They have been working from seven AM until five fifteen, so they take advantage of every single minute of light. And since December twenty-second, it's only gotten a couple of minutes extra every day. But yeah, the, the mild winter has, I mean, it's really helped them. So they're very happy out there.
Sure. Can I just one question? Did you have a follow-up?
No.
Um, after, I don't know a lot about buildings, so after clearly the steel is your, your big project right now, what's the next sort of big project? I know it's multifaceted, but the next big, big piece that you'll be turning your attention to?
Uh, so it, the critical path of the building is probably gonna be the sheeting. So the light gauge metal framing on the exterior of the building, building, followed by a den's glass or a den's deck. And then that'll get, so it'll kind of, the building will go from steel on the outside to a yellow sheeting, to an AVB, black or blue product, and then panels would follow that and windows. Um, kind of in, on the interior of the bill- building, you're gonna see rough in start on the, on the, uh, mechanical trades. Um, roof will be going very quickly. The next goal, actually, probably sometime in the next couple of weeks, uh, we're looking to probably pour slabs on, on deck. Because we, what we can't do prior to that is spray-applied fireproofing, which we need to do, um, to get the mechanical trades in there to hang all of this. So it is a big process.
I, I recognize I was, as I was coming out of my mouth, I'm like, that's absurd. It's not one thing. Uh, it's a really complicated puzzle, but thank you for sharing just a little bit of what you have going on. No, it's very helpful.
Yeah, so, any other questions on construction?
Can I ask, can I ask one here?
There you go, Dale.
There was some concern regarding the cost of steel and tariffs and things like that. Did that boil down to anything we need to worry about?
No issues.
No issues.
When the steel was purchased, uh, or when the contract was signed, um, Fontaine, uh, is it, it's a non-trade buyout. So Fontaine has control of creating their contract. Uh, when Fontaine bought out the steel from Norgate and also their erector, Stellar Steel, they have confirmation in their buyout that tariffs will not affect the price of their steel. Contract signed, it's locked into place.
Nice.
Yeah, so, and we, we really haven't seen that on other projects yet. Nothing significant to, about for upcoming work as well. So, uh, I can, I know you guys were, uh, handed out the me, uh, memo that I sent to the building committee. Um, I, if anyone has any questions at any point, you can stop me, but I will, uh, I'll, I'll go through it. Um, so I think you guys have been through the projects before. But the way the, uh, estimate packages work, we start with a schematic design estimate. That was what the town of Shrewsbury voted on as the voter-approved project budget for the construction cost. It was seventy-four million, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Um, LPA's and PMA's job to monitor that budget and to the d- design to that budget, um, is what we strive to do. Uh, so there's three checks prior to, uh, the bidding phase. Um, CM at Risk, you kind of have a little bit of leeway. You can buy out packages early. So there's some things that you can take advantage of, but in general, there's three checks of estimates, uh, prior to bidding. So at design development, which was about four months after the vote, uh, that submission went in. Um, two professional estimates, one done by L, uh, LPA's estimated record, one done by CM, the CM at Risk, Fontaine. We were about forty-five hundred dollars lower than, uh, the SD estimate. So still in good shape. Drawings are getting detailed at that point in time, or additional detail would feed input from school department, from educators, anyone in town. Um, about three to four months after that, the sixty percent construction documents came out. And we were about six hundred thousand dollars lower than our estimated budget. So, and again, two check estimates, uh, that's where we were at. Um, at the ninety percent estimates, we were about one point one million under, uh, where we were at, at schematic design. So still trending, very good. Nothing's been value engineered out of the project. The designs are very good. Um, and, and the way we're able to check that is the two estimators. And we make sure that they have a very, very small margin. I think they were both within three percent of each other, um, which just shows how clear the documents that LPA is providing to the town are. So it's a great, uh, product that's, that's happening. Um, kind of simultaneously with those estimates, um, uh, the pre-construction fees negotiated with Fontaine. Um, amendment one, which was, uh, executed around June. Um, so it was kind of in between the sixties and the nineties, or right around the sixties, was the site package and the demo and abatement. Uh, that amendment was, uh, twelve million, five hundred and eighteen thousand. Um, kind of tough to compare that to anything because it's a pulled-out piece. Um, so that's where we were at amendment one. Amendment two, which was, uh, structural steel and concrete, uh, was eight million, seven seventeen. Uh, and then at the conclusion of the drawings, which was the hundred percent drawings, what we did was we bid it out to the trade contractors, so there's sixteen specified trades that need to be publicly bid out in Massachusetts. Uh, those bids came in and we were able to create an amendment to get those guys on board as quickly as we could. Um, and that, those bids came in at twenty-four million, four seventy-one, oh fifty-three. So we have about half the project, a little over half the project bought out at that point in time with those trade contractors. So the next step for Fontaine is, and the, uh, project team, is to work to create a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price. So it's Fontaine stating to the project team that we understand what's in the documents. We understand what's in the specifications. We understand the site. We can provide what's in these documents for this price and no more. And we can work, the, their, Fontaine's goal is always to work under that price. Um, but the way that they are able to come up with that final value is, starting in about October, November, they have been scoping out three, two to six trades on, on drywall, on spray-applied fireproofing, on metal panels, uh, probably about twenty different packages. Um, and they've been working to get numbers from all of those guys, from the drawings at LPA and the specification that LPA provided. Um, they're going through, make, why is it, why are you carrying this? Why are you carrying that? Um, and then what they did is they provided us with, uh, a list of scope holds that they feel are, they're confident that they'll be able to buy out every trade that's remaining on the project for that number or less. Um, and I'll go into a little bit more on how that works after, but I just wanted everyone to, uh, see. Uh, the, so the comparison that you want to make is from the voter-approved schematic design construction budget of seventy-four million to the GMP construction budget of seventy-two point six four million. Um, which is a delta of about one point four seven million dollars. So about one, almost one point five million under budget at this point in time. Um, PMA and LPA both concur that that is a, uh, a, a very tight, not tight estimate, but a very well-done estimate by Fontaine of, of what this project could, could, could and should cost. Um, so what I wanted to kind of go over with you guys, so you understand how the GMP works, is just what's in the GMP. Uh, exhibit A is the enumeration of documents. It's the specifications. It's all the amendments. It's all the drawings listed off for Fontaine. Uh, exhibit B is a list of allowances. So all of the allowances from the first three amendments were included in this. Uh, uh, for reference, uh, an allowance is for a scope that cannot be fully defined at this time, but is understanding that the project is likely to include that scope of work. So a couple of things that are actually included in this, which would make the budget slightly less, uh, would be a potential sidewalk from Hilear, Hilear to the school site, uh, in front of the, um, soccer field. And also, um, utilizing project funds to connect the sewer line, uh, from the back of the site down to, I always forget the name of the street.
Hillside.
Hillside, thank you. And Keith always gets it for me, thank you. Um, so that's being included in that list of allowances. Um, and it's, those, those holds together are almost a million dollars. So if you kind of look at that from a broader perspective, the, the project could be almost a million dollars less on that GMP. But just, I think your town manager and your facilities director and they're doing the right thing by making a safe route, a potential safe route to school. And also carrying, uh, some work that is gonna tie into the site. And it's a lot of times better to have a site contractor that knows the site, knows where he's going, has installed all of that work already, just finish it out. Um, so again, just a very good, uh, idea. Uh, exhibit C is the list of scope holds, and this is what I was speaking to, oh, I'm sorry, um, allowances. So allowances that are, uh, overrun are funded out of owner contingency because they're items that the owner is kind of saying, we'd like to include, we're not sure what the final design is. So it is a best guess for what the- So it is a best guess for what the contractor should carry in there, and it's, it's, they are very healthy, but it, it's just a risk that. Um, and then sim- similarly, any under run would be transferred back to owner contingency as well. Scope holds are kind of the opposite, they're a defined scope, they're exactly what we know on the drawings, Fontaine just hasn't bought out that work yet. They have done a very good job and their scope holds are very tight on where they're gonna be on the budget. Um, we're already starting to see some of those numbers come in slightly under. Uh, as opposed to allowances, hold overruns and hold underruns are funded through what is a, called a G M P contingency or construction contingency, and it's really for the, uh, contractor Fontaine. Um, they are tied to that number, um, and it's something they build in, in case of risk. Uh, I think on the library, they might have spent five percent of it, and that was only because they took care of a couple of things. Um, so they don't tend to, uh, utilize it, uh, unless there's something that's really egregious. But I, again, they, they all come back in and go back out of the G M P contingency. Now, both of those, also, any underruns in either of those are then given back to the town at the end of the project. Uh, Exhibit D is a list of assumptions, qualifications, and clarifications. Um, there's not many from Fontaine, um, but it's just some stuff with arsenic soils. It's what was carried in the original, uh, assumptions qualification. Exhibit E is their C P M baseline schedule, uh, update two, rev. one, uh, which we get on a monthly basis. It's a deliverable that they're required to give us for payment of their application for payment. Um, and it's checked by, uh, internally at P M A. Um, and then any changes of the, changes or adjustments that are necessary are done prior to the payment of that. So, uh, they are on schedule and picking up days of what we call float, uh, which are just extra days in the schedule on the critical path. Uh, Exhibit F is the summary of costs, kind of a schedule of values, it includes everything that's in the project summarized at the bottom of it. Uh, Schedule H is a list of unit prices, uh, there were no new unit prices for the G M P amendment for it, this is just what was carried in Amendments One through Three. Uh, Exhibit I is a list of general requirements, general requirements are what it costs Fontaine to manage a project, run the project safely. Uh, it's stuff like temporary fuel for winter conditions, it's winter conditions for site work, uh, barricades, tent barricades, safety stairs, um, laborers, carpenters for them to carry and utilize on the site. Um, almost all of these are gonna be tracked on a lump sum basis, uh, over the eighteen months of construction that are remaining. Uh, the winter conditions, and there's about six of them, will be billed on a T and M basis, so they'll be providing backup, P M A will verify it, and then we would approve them to include that in their requisitions. Uh, so in summary, P M A and L P A both feel that the G M P provided by Fontaine is an acceptable price, and it is inclusive of the really well-detailed documents that L P A has provided. Um, so I'll again open it back up to questions from everyone.
Questions or comments?
Is this for the whole presentation?
Yep.
I just have one, uh, comment regarding the history exhibit that you're preparing. I think that's really good that you're doing it, just to let you know that, uh, Mr. Palace and I did a thirty-minute cable show on the history of Beal, and it's available on YouTube. Um, also, he was, uh...
Come to one of our classes.
And...
Yeah, and Beal was a physician, uh, as well as a major in the service. He was a member of the Worcester Medical Society, and I have some materials that refer to him, uh, from the medical society, if, if that would help them.
Nice plug, Dale.
Yeah, that's great.
Drive it up to eight views.
I just want to compliment the work that you've done, I think it's great to see yet another project, uh, approved by Shrewsbury voters coming in on time, under budget. Um, so just thank you for everything that you've done, and I think that the taxpayers in Shrewsbury are gonna get tremendous value out of this project.
Lindsay?
I also want to thank you for all, all of the detail and the, the work, and it's a little bit more complicated than I understand. But, um, I'd also just like to thank the, the building department. Um, I think the videos and using the drones to do all that, I, I hope that's something that we can put out there to the community as well because they like to know more about what's happening, and so it's just...
They are on the Public Buildings website.
Perfect, and we'll make sure that we, we, we share that out to the, to the folks who are connected to our schools because everybody's so excited about it, and it's nice to start to see it come together, but now that soccer's over, I don't drive to Lake Street. I drove down there recently, and I was like, look, and what is happening here?
So I, I, I did want to add one thing, uh, you had the STEM team from Sherwood here, correct? Uh, on Monday, at about three forty-five, we had the STEM team, the younger STEM team from kind of a, some patent, some spring, and, uh, Fontaine did a presentation, uh, for them, and we walked them around the site with a few of their parents. So you have young STEM learners that are engaged in construction already as well.
I have to say, I like that part of this, is that you can actually bring this into the classroom because this is a big deal for the town, and it's happening now. And, and again, thank you for the details that you provide, and every, every presentation is very detailed, and I think the drone footage for me is my favorite, and it brings it, it brings it, uh, home in terms of reality. It's, it's really, really well done, so thank you.
Yeah, this is such a good news story, I think, you know, I, you know, everything's good about it, but looking at the G M P and the, you know, already, as Jason mentioned, you know, for the voters, that's a huge savings already. And I think, you know, I, I'm the, um, school committee representative on the building committee, and Lindsay, no dumb questions because I, they'll have acronyms, like, what are they talking about? But then, you know, you explain it, and it's such a, such a process to build something this, the size, and then working with the M S B A and all the, you know, requirements that way. But I think it's because, you know, L P A and P M A, you know, we've got Keith Baldwin here from Public Buildings, like, so many people are so invested in this, and, um, like, the drone, that's great, you know, we, the public gets to see where their money is going at every step of the way. And, um, I drove by on New Year's Day, and there was some steel, and then last week, I'm like, look at how much more. And yes, we were fortunate, it's, it's great weather, but it's also this team. I mean, it's such a great team doing this, so this is a really good news story. The building is going up fast, and it's also under budget, which is huge for this community. So thank you to everybody, and I know Chris is here too, and the whole furniture piece. I work for a company that, when they built the new building, same thing, we could look at chairs, we could look at tables, and you had a little more investment, and some chairs were like, no, nobody wants to sit in those. So it was, you know, something that people really are invested in when they're given that opportunity, so I think that's great.
Thank you.
Dr. Sawyer, anything?
Uh, I want to thank certainly, uh, everyone for the presentation. Uh, as we expected, the combination of, of P M A and L P A and Fontaine Brothers, uh, it, it's really a dream team of, of real consummate professionals, and, uh, just as the library project, um, when the three teamed up, uh, this is going exceedingly well. Uh, the, uh, and, and to have some new members working, you know, Natalie is, is newer to working with our, our school district, doing outstanding job, uh, we were, uh, obviously worried when Paul Queenie, who had been our person from P M A on the Sherwood project as well as the library, uh, decided to, to leave P M A to go to UMass Lowell, uh, but he assured us Walter would be a superstar, and that's proving to be the case. Uh, appreciate all the work that, that he's been doing, and, and again, all the support Keith and Public Buildings are providing, uh, Chris Girardi and his team at, at Beal, uh, along with Amy Clouder and, and Meg Belcito, um, and, uh, certainly, uh, Patrick Hollins for all the, the work, you know, being the liaison from the school side, weekly meetings. There's, there's, uh, th- this is enormously detailed work, uh, but it's so well organized uh, that I think the public should have enormous confidence that this is a, a really responsible use of their taxpayer dollars that is going to provide, as Mr. Palace said, just, uh, exceptional value for the community for many decades to come. Uh, I'm also, as a history major, very interested to see when comes of the, of the history project piece and what that will look like, and I know that L P A is really dedicated to making that work well, and I think the fact that we're involving Shrewsbury High School students in doing a lot of that research themselves, along with Mr. Perna as the town historian, um, as well as Mr., uh, Palace and Dr. McGee from their research on, on, uh, um, I think it's going to be a terrific way, and not, and not only, uh, Major Beal, but also some of the history of the site, and the fact that it was the Glavine Center, and, you know, making sure we're respecting the history of those who came before, uh, on that, and it's a wonderful site for a school. So, uh, it's a great news story, and, uh, I'm very grateful as superintendent that it's going so well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda, we, uh, will have a vote on the school year calendar for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We had a draft presented at our last meeting on January twenty-second. I know, uh, the school committee received two comments on the calendar. One was in reference to, um, Good Friday and the observance of religious holidays, and we do have a policy, policy in place for that in accordance with Massachusetts law, where a student who may miss a day for religious observance are excused with no penalty, and they also have adequate time to make up work, and that was conveyed to the, uh, parent that asked that question. Another, um, was around professional development days, full days, half days, and, um, we talked about that being something that is negotiated with the S E A, and at this point, if there were to be any changes, that would be within the next, um, that could be brought up at the next, uh, contract negotiations when those occur. So those are the only two comments that I received, I don't think there was anything further, Dr. Sawyer.
I did not receive anything, Derek.
So are there any questions or comments on the calendar?
And, oh, before I forget, thank you, um, I had asked about the March, um, early release day being very close to February's school vacation week, and that was bumped out a week, so thank you for that. I think that gives a little break for parents.
It's a great suggestion.
Okay, so nothing further, Dr. Sawyer, anything further on that?
No, I think it's, uh, again, we, we vetted it with several employee advisory groups ahead of time and with the leadership of both, uh, employee associations, um, and then, um, obviously, we, we sent it out actually twice for parent comment. Um, I, just to reference again, in addition, uh, the, the real two different changes that we did not receive feedback on, um, is that we would, uh, push out the first day of school for students one day long, uh, later than typical, and flip that with the, what was typically the Friday professional development day, um, in order to avoid having the first day of, for students on the same day as the Massachusetts primary election, uh, especially because Spring Street and Coolidge are both polling places. Um, and then we are moving, uh, the kindergarten and preschool screenings to, uh, early May, uh, two days that would not, uh, students would not go to school at the preschool and kindergarten level so we can screen next year's students, um, which is a heavily, or highly recommended by the elementary principals that they can get data earlier on those students and, and plan, uh, better for them. Uh, but again, no feedback on those, and, uh, so the calendar draft that is in your packet is, uh, what I strongly recommend you adopt.
Okay. May I have a motion to vote to approve the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And next, we will have a fiscal year twenty twenty-one transportation budget report from Mr. Collins.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Have this presentation in your packet. I know, so, uh, this is an opportunity, uh, for us to talk about, uh, school transportation budget for next year in a greater level of detail, uh, as we will in the upcoming meetings on other topics like special education, curriculum, and technology, and fees, and things like that. So, uh, tonight was more of a deeper dive, as it says here, on, uh, school transportation. Uh, so I wanted to, uh, cover some, the main topics like the services that we provide, and the providers that we have, uh, some brothership and fee, uh, payer data, uh, costs, of course, and, uh, funding sources, and then the detailed lineup of budgets which you have in your, uh, blue, uh, budget books. So first, for some, uh, context, uh, in terms of the, uh, town appropriated budget, which is, uh, been made by Dr. Sawyer for fiscal twenty-one, uh, at your last meeting. Uh, this is a, a kind of a big picture overview of the major components of, uh, the school town appropriated budget. Of course, in blue is, uh, staff salaries and wages, uh, eighty-three percent, um, which represents, of course, the largest piece of the pie since we're a service organization. Um, if you look at the, kind of the next two biggest pieces, uh, to the left there, the red and the green, you know, we have, uh, regular education, transportation, other related services at two point six million, or four percent of the budget, and then special education transportation coming in just under one point three million for another two percent. So that's a combined six percent of the overall, uh, operating budget for next year, so it's a big piece of pie, and that's why we want to kind of break it down a little bit more for you. So in terms of some of the services that we provide, we provide an array of services, uh, probably most people are familiar with, but, uh, maybe some, uh, that they're not. So we listed them out here, of course, the first is what everybody knows and sees every, but, every day is the regular home-to-school transportation. Um, our provider is AA Transportation, has been for a number of years. Um, we're in the midst of a five-year contract with them, uh, right now. And of course, we are transporting students, uh, not only for Shrewsbury Public Schools, but we're also by law required to provide transportation to our students who attend Aspen Valley Regional Technical High School, uh, and also the, uh, private schools that are located within, uh, the town border, uh, Saint Mary's, Saint John's, Al Hamra, and Montessori, those are Department of Ed approved private schools. And so we are required to provide transportation services to those students at the same level of service that we provide to our Shrewsbury Public School students. It can't be a, a different service level, it has to be kind of on par, uh, all across the board. Uh, the next, uh, type of transportation is, uh, out-of-district special education. These are the students, uh, that of course, uh, go to many different private schools across the Commonwealth from, you know, nearly all the way into Boston to, uh, north and west and south of us as well. Um, and our educational collaborative, Aspen Valley Collaborative, one of their major functions as an educational collaborative for, now, we believe it's a loving member of communities, uh, surrounding, uh, is to, uh, group purchase, uh, van service for all of these out-of-district placements, for all of their members, and then also to, uh, coordinate and ride-share where it is possible, uh, to maximize cost efficiencies. So for example, if we have a student in Shrewsbury, who's a Shrewsbury resident, in an out-of-district placement, say at New England Center, uh, for Children in Southborough, and there are seats on that same van, um, and students in Westborough or Northborough, they would go to those other communities as well, on the way from Shrewsbury to Southborough, pick up those students, and we would share the cost of that van service. So not only is it a, a, a great service that they provide, uh, but they also take care of all of the, um, billing, which is a very detailed kind of on a student-by-student basis, and then bill out, uh, to the districts, uh, our, uh, fair share. They also go out to bid for those services, and currently, uh, their contract that they have is with Vanpool, and you'll see those vans driving around town, uh, with those Vanpool, um, company, um, insignia, um, during the daytime. The other, uh, type of transportation, of course, is to athletic competitions, uh, both at the high school and middle school. Middle school, of course, is much more limited, that is also a contract with AA Transportation. We pr- uh, provide and are required to provide services, uh, when it's needed to, uh, homeless students or students who are in foster care. Again, this is a service that, uh, is coordinated primarily through the Aspen Collaborative, um, and those services are provided by Vanpool. And so for example, if we had a student who was, uh, a, living in Shrewsbury, uh, enrolled in our school district, and for whatever circumstances arose with that family, if they became homeless, and unfortunately, this does happen every year, uh, you know, if, if the house had a fire and it become uninhabitable and they're temporarily living, uh, say in Westborough, uh, or in Worcester, then we are required by, uh, law, uh, to pick up that student, provide a transportation service to where they are temporarily housed, and bring them back to Shrewsbury Schools to their, uh, current school so as to provide, uh, stability of educational services, uh, in, you know, stability of life, if you will, uh, under those circumstances. So that's homeless and foster care students, uh, provide limited, uh, transportation during the summertime for the summer special education programs, and that would only be for students who have, uh, specialized transportation in their I E P. Might be a wheelchair, uh, equipped bus, for example, um, and they are attending the summer school, then we're required to provide transportation, uh, for that summer, uh, program, whether it be a four-week program or a six-week program. The last type of service that, uh, is provided is field trips, um, and this is through AA Transportation with our contract with them. It's important to note that, uh, the school district, and the school district budget... It's important to note that the school district, in the school district budget, do not pay for field trip services. There's no monies in our school budget in here for field trip services. Those costs are borne by the students' parents who are participating in the field trip and also heavily subsidized by the parent-teacher organizations. Thankfully, they do a great job with part of their fundraising. They will subsidize a variety of transportation services for field trips during the year. So those are the types of services, the type of equipment that we have. Forty-eight yellow buses. Of that forty-eight, forty-one, forty-one of them, excuse me, are full-size buses. Thirty-eight are used for public and private schools that I just mentioned. And then three are assigned to Aspen Valley Regional Technical High School. And then the remaining seven buses are thirty-four-seat half buses. And three of those have a wheelchair lift capacity. All the equipment, all the buses are equipped with two video cameras. They're all equipped with GPS devices that show not only location, but they can provide information on exactly at what time a bus stopped, at a bus stop, for how long they stopped, and then when that bus got moving again. They're equipped with two-way radios that they can talk to their dispatch office. And then all the drivers also have cell phones as a backup in case of emergency, if they needed to call 911, for example. It's just kind of another redundant communication piece that they have. All of our buses, since the rebid, are model year 2016 or newer. So we have safe equipment that we're transporting our students in. In terms of the number of routes, right now, we're running about 269 routes. Hundred-and-twenty-eight in the morning, eighteen midday routes for half-day kindergarten sessions and half-day preschool. And then about 123 in the afternoon. So a lot of bus routes. We run a three-tier system, so we maximize the use of the bus. This is just one example. So in the morning, bus number five, for example, does a high school run as tier one. This is the three-tier service. When they're done with that, they'll start in automatically on their middle school run. They'll pick up students from both Oak and Sherwood and deliver them simultaneously, or drop at Oak first and then Sherwood, and then have a little bit of a break. And then they'll go on and do an elementary school run. And in this case, bus five has a run at Spring Street School. And then the reverse just happens in the afternoon. So it's a three-tier system. Ridership data, fairly consistent. This year, we have just over 4,500 students who are registered and approved for bus services. Eighty-eight at Aspen, forty-four at St. John's, thirty-nine at St. Mary's, forty-four at Al Hamra, twenty-two at Montessori. And then also, again, through the collaborative, there are 41 students who are being transported through those services to out-of-district placements for a total of just, just under 4,800 students per day. You know, transporting them twice per day, that's 9,600 student trips per day, 180-day school a year. So we have 1.7 million student bus trips on an annual basis. So pretty big program. Moving into some items that are fee-related for parents. Of course, it's not a free service, but we've got this system where, many years ago, it was decided that we would bus, provide bus service at the so-called state minimum. So the state minimum is directed by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 68. And basically, it says that we are required, public schools are required to transport students, and only transport students by law, kindergarten through grade six, who live more than two miles from their home. And of course, of course, many and most school districts transport beyond those, depending on how they're set up. And so it was decided many years ago that we would not only do that because we have to, but also offer the services to all other students, including high school, grade seven through 12, middle school. We would offer service on a fee basis. So students who are more than two miles from their home and in grades K through six do not have to pay a fee. All others do. If a student's eligible for free or reduced lunch, their fee is completely waived. Again, it's that, that's per Massachusetts general law. Students who have specialized transportation that is specific in their IEP, the fee is waived. Students who attend Aspen Valley Regional Technical High School, by state law, we cannot, we are prohibited from charging a fee. And then homeless and foster care students, kind of goes without saying, there's no fee associated with that. So that's kind of the free versus fee breakout for parents and students. So who's paying the fee? It's the K through six students who live less than two miles from their school and all grade seven through 12 students. And again, this is the same for all of those families and students who attend a private school. Same rules apply, exact same rules apply. So here's just a distribution of our 4,500 riders in the Shrewsbury Schools, which was easy to grab. Fifty-six percent are paying a fee, 44% are free. Moving on to some more detailed cost data. This is, I guess it's about a 10-year look here on what a yellow bus costs. And I think it's probably best to start at the bottom with this language that the information that you see here in terms of an annual bus cost, what does that include? So it includes the vehicle itself and all the equipment that I just talked about, the cameras, the GPS system, the maintenance of the vehicle, fuel, the driver, wages for the driver, the benefits for the driver, all related insurances, inspections. All of those things, all of those costs are borne directly by the vendor, by the provider. And in this case, with the yellow bus, all of those costs are borne by AA Transportation. And then their fee to us, on an annual basis, you can see in blue for one bus for the entire year, and the driver and all those other associated things, is $76,334. On a daily basis, it's $424.08. That's in the upper row, going from left to right. You can see what the daily rates were back in fiscal '14. They were at 323. For fiscal '21, they'll be $100 more, just over $100 more, $424.08 per day we're paying for that bus. And then we already know, because we did a five-year contract and bid that service, that our costs for fiscal '22 and '23 will increase by 2.9% and 2.8%. That's on the lower left there, by contract. And, you know, as you might know, or people might have read, you know, there's, there's not a lot of bus providers out there. And so there's some big national providers. And then in Massachusetts, there are some regional providers. And AA Transportation happens to be a fairly good size, I'd say, medium-to-large size regional provider. And when we go out to procure these services, we have to do, you know, your standard sealed bid process. You put out your specifications, and you get your bids back. And if you are required to take the lowest bid from the bidder, that is the responsible bidder and has met all of your specifications. In this case, again, when we rebid, we only had one bid, and that was from AA Transportation. You might remember that when we rebid it in fiscal '19, the cost increase that was bid was, I believe, was close to 18%, 20% increase. And so we talked to the owner, and we were able to make out an arrangement that actually spread that big spike instead of one year over two years. And that's what we're experiencing now, a 13% increase for the current fiscal year. So we're pleased he was able to do that. And he actually lowered his overall costs by a little bit over the five-year periods. So we're appreciative of that. So those are some of the more detailed costs. This is just a chart showing the annual cost per bus escalation over time for the past 10 years and where it will be in fiscal '22 and '23. You know, from our early budget discussion, that one of the phenomenons that's happening for fiscal '21 that is impacting our budget in a pretty significant way is that we receive, like all school districts do, some federal targeted special education grant funds. Shrewsbury receives about $1.5 million per year in the so-called IDEA grant, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And some changes in the use of those funds were directed by the federal government to the state of Massachusetts. And it's trickled down to us so that in fiscal '18, excuse me, fiscal '17 and prior, we were able to use all of the funds, 100% of the funds, for transportation-related services. And then in fiscal '18, we needed to begin setting aside a portion of that grant funds for so-called proportionate share. And that is to, in this case, for fiscal '21, for example, in the red bar, it's $57,380 is what we're estimating needs to be set aside for proportionate share. What that means is, is that the private schools that are located within Shrewsbury and also have students who are on individual educational plans are entitled to their proportionate share of that grant money. It's a basic ratio, taking a look at all of the special education kids in terms of a head count, and then doling out on a percentage basis which school has what percent of the total. So you can see that monies had to be diverted, if you will, from what our prior use was now to some proportionate share funds. And they get to use the funds in any way that they so desire for the purposes of providing special education services or that we provide them those services for them. So you can see it kind of edged away at some of our funding. In fiscal '21, we've now got a new allocation of $230,000 of the $1.5 million. Needs to be set aside because our district was noted as disproportionately identifying students. And Dr. Sawyer, you'll have to help me with that part because you're more knowledgeable.
That's all right. No, it's for disproportionately identifying white students with a primary disability of emotional disability. A very small number of students, like 40-something students. But in terms of the federal rule is that it has to be proportionate to the way, the instances of demographics in your district. We're slightly outside of that ratio. And it's somewhat of a blunt instrument, regardless of how many students or how disproportionate you might be. 15% of your special education grant needs to be set aside to address that particular issue. And that's work that we're doing with the Department of Education. We have another meeting coming up with them next week, actually, along with some other districts around the state that are in the same situation. Because there are a lot of requirements as to how the district will be able to spend that money. But the bottom line is, $230,000 that we otherwise would have been spending on special education transportation will now need to be redirected to other purposes, which means we'll have to shift those costs to the appropriated budget.
Another piece of data. This, this chart shows all of our funding sources over a three-year span, fiscal '19, '20, and '21, in terms of dollars and percentages. And so there's multiple funds, basically. That's what these multicolors represent, is multiple different sources of funds being used to pay for transportation services. The blue represents the town appropriated budget. Red represents special education grant that I just was talking about. And then the green represents fee revenue from the fee payers that I was talking about earlier. So you can see the shift over time here from fiscal '19 to fiscal '21, that, that arrow where the town appropriated budget was paying for 57% of the total cost of all the, of the services combined will now be up to 66 percentage points. So a significant increase in terms of the dollar difference. You can see going from 2.8 million up to 3.9 million dollars over that time span. So again, a significant shift. And then the red bar, which represents the grant, going from $1.4 million in transportation down to a budgeted 1.24 for fiscal '21. So that's the squeeze. Kind of the detailed line item pieces here. You know, we've got pupil transportation regular day. There's, you know, some technical accounting stuff here right from our accounting system. That's for next year, 2.158 million. We've got the homeless student transportation budget at 75,000. Foster care at 15,000. Locational at 233,000. We have some small amounts of student funds for student activity transportation, $5,500 for music-related competitions. And then just over $11,000 for other high school-related student activities like speech and debate competitions or other special club and activity transportation. And then $140,000 for athletic transportation. All of that for fiscal '21 were 2.638 million dollars. In addition to that, we've got dollars set aside for just special education services in our town appropriated budget for the summer program, like I mentioned, 77,250. Here's the big increase category, special education transportation, 832,500. And then bus monitoring services, 382,000 dollars. So what is, what accounts for that 571,000 dollar increase? In the blue area, that's the grant reduction impact of 230,000 dollars. So that takes 39% of the total piece of the pie. We've got increased students and increased volume of students in services, 288,000 dollars. And then just the rate increase on the cost of providing services at about 67,000 dollars. All that adds up to the 585,000 incremental increase from the current year to next. So where do we go from here on the transportation budget? It's much like the other budgets. You know, we're in the middle of the process now. We're not done. You know, we continue to look at and refine our budget estimates. We will look at potential ways for cutting back. I know that next week, we'll be making a presentation on fees for not only busing, but athletics and other types of things. You'll hear from Mr. Costa about some of the ideas that he's been thinking about related to athletic transportation. And so you'll hear a lot more information, again, more information on transportation in the fee topic at your next meeting. But we'll continue to refine and look at all these things and then provide an update as we get near the end of the process to see if there's any changes that we need to make to our budget to provide the services that we're required to provide. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Any questions or comments?
If you were to go back a few slides, you have one that's titled, "The Details of Regular Education and Other Related Services." That one, thank you. So a couple I just want to understand a little bit more. Maybe we'll start at the bottom. The athletic transportation, it looks like we dropped quite a bit this year, but you picked it from 163,000 down to 130,000. I was speculating in my brain, maybe that was triple E-related, that canceled a lot of travel, or why travel went down for high school so much this year, but we think it might be going up a bit next year. Do you remember what that?
So for this, this chart here, what it's showing for fiscal '18
Yep.
and fiscal '19 are actual costs.
Okay. Twenty's still budgeted?
Fiscal '20 is budgeted costs.
Okay. Okay.
So we haven't, obviously, gone through the whole year here. You can see that fiscal '19, our costs definitely spiked for athletic transportation. And part of that was related to the installation of the turf field. And so for the, basically, about And so for the, basically about the first two months, we couldn't use...
Bust people out.
Yeah. So we had to have many off-site competitions, so our costs for transportation.
Sure. So I guess what I'm thinking about is the ones of the line items that are not set by contract, right? So the things like homeless students or foster care. How close to actuals are we on this fiscal year? And to understand how close we... You can loop back to us, but I'm just wondering, our projections for next year?
Well, you can see for homeless transportation, there's just wide variations.
Yes.
So fiscal '18, you know, we spent $61,000. In the last fiscal year, we spent $98,000.
Right.
So, you know, that's just, it's highly variable. You kind of go with your best guess right now. This year, we budgeted $55,000, and right now, the projection is that we'd be, if things were to be no change...
Sure. I understand we're only...
We'd be over by $6,000. So we'd probably be spending about $61,000. So I've budgeted, you know, for next year, $75,000 so that we... I mean, I think you're kind of like picking the middle or maybe the high middle
Yep.
So that we don't come up short. In terms of foster care, transportation services, actually, this year, we've had none to date.
Okay.
Budgeted $12,000.
That's some variability.
That's the variability.
Right.
Yeah. And the foster care, transportation piece, in terms of a separate breakout, is fairly new as well. It's actually just in fiscal '19 where it started to be broken out. And I made a presentation to you in the fall or a couple of months ago relative to foster care, transportation reimbursement from the state, which would be very small, but, you know, still worthwhile since we're tracking the cost separately. It's definitely worthwhile, you know, submitting for reimbursement if there's money comes through. And so we'll... It requires that the town meeting actually take a vote to accept a memorandum of understanding and participate in this program. So we've sent that information to Mr. Mizikar for inclusion on the town meeting's annual warrant. And I'm very optimistic that that would be
Thank you.
Well-received.
Thank you.
This was a very detailed presentation, and there are a couple of things here that you brought up that I think need highlighting, that I think are very important. One is the bar graph that shows the shift of costs from external sources, that one, into the town appropriated budget. And I think, just want to highlight a couple of things here, which is the business of running the school system involves financial sources that go outside the town appropriated budget and that some of those can be very volatile. And if we lose those outside sources, we still have to pay the bills. So that the town appropriated budget can go up even if the cost for the service doesn't, simply because of that. And I think that's an important fact that goes not just for transportation, but also goes for the entire budget when we try to understand it. The last is that, if I'm doing my math correctly, if we look at just the day students and what it costs and the 4,500 students that go back and forth every day, it's roughly $490 per student as a cost for moving them back and forth from home to school within the district. And if that number is about correct, it gives us some perspective as to where the fees stand with regard to meeting the costs of the service that is provided for this group. They are, as high as the fees are, they're still subsidized.
Thank you. Yeah, and I can, you know, at the next presentation, I can break that out for you in terms of the, so you have that precise lens on it when you're talking about fees as well.
Thank you.
I have two questions. How is the need for a bus monitor determined? It isn't a big increase, is that? How do we determine how many we need?
So the bus monitors are only placed on a bus if there is a need, if there are students on that bus with an IEP that require a monitor. And so, you know, the goal of each of the team meetings is to provide services to students in the least restrictive environment. So just because a student has some sort of disability doesn't necessarily mean that they need to travel on a so-called special education bus. They could travel on their neighborhood bus, but that if they were, for example, they had a disability that caused them to bolt a lot, and we do have those students who are not be able to sit safely in their seat during the ride of the bus, and they, you know, could be self-ingenuous or hurt somebody else, then there'd be a bus monitor assigned to that regular education bus, the bus monitors on there for those special education students. So our bus monitors, and I'm glad you brought up that question because the bus monitors are not on the bus because there's rowdy students or discipline types of issues. The bus drivers are responsible for managing those as well as driving the bus, if you can imagine, you know, 40-foot buses and narrow roads and, you know, managing students. But the bus monitors are really there for students who have an IEP that require it.
And that can vary depending on the needs.
Exactly.
That's very student needs, okay. My other question, when we look at the budget, when we look at the, that subset of K through six under two miles, so that is a, parents can choose to pay a fee for busing. So it's not a requirement, it's a accommodation for students. And I know there are safety issues for some walk errors and so forth, but I'd like to know the number of students and really what is the bottom line cost to the district for that subset? Because we've got, it's a choice. So just as we look at the budget, and that's something that you don't have to give me tonight, but I think as you move, I'd like to kind of look at what that number is, especially as we're looking at overall budget and fees.
Sure. And I think too, and that's data that's easily derived in terms of what that population is, you know, I think the harder part is to try to assign a specific cost to it. There would have to be some estimating for... I think the hypothetical thing, if I understand what you're saying, is if that service were to not be provided, then what would it do to our costs? And the only way that it would affect our cost is if we were to eliminate yellow buses.
Right, right.
And so one would need to then, you know, estimate how many buses could potentially be eliminated if all of those students were no longer provided services. Of course, the bus routes aren't defined in a way to say, pick up the kids that are within two miles only.
Exactly.
You know, those buses go in and out and whatnot. So, you know, we could certainly do some estimating, but I just want to make sure that...
It's not an actual... Right.
Yeah, exactly. Because the costs just aren't borne that way.
Yeah. I think we're just looking for what that possible estimate, just so we can do a comparison of that.
Sure. Anybody have anything else?
Can I ask one more question? As we think about a two-year cycle, Beal opening and buses, and we've had some very early conversations about getting some consulting support to think about routing and districts, I just wonder what we need to be thinking on a two-year cycle on the busing front, if we're going to need more buses given the number of students... Again, it sounds like we'll be coming back to think about this, but what that might look like for us, those all being younger kids potentially coming into the district, but we've also have out there in our goals someday to think through also school start time and what that means. And so if it is help, give us some sense of what that, what other variability that might bring, if not next year's budget cycle, but on a two-year one. I think it would be helpful for us to make sure the community understands that amongst all the things that they want us to do, what costs are associated with those. Thoughts of that's pretty speculative, but even, like, do we have in our budget for this year the consultant, is that recovered? Are we doing that next year? Some of those things would be helpful to understand.
Sure. And I think, you know, one just reaction to that question is, in terms of determining the impact for opening Beal, you know, the kind of prerequisite work that needs to be done and has started is the project of school assignments or redistricting for students in knowing which school, which students and which neighborhoods are going to which school. So it really, the work that you're talking about, of course, is very important work, and I think there's a sequence to it that we define our elementary districts first. I would echo your sentiment that having some technical resources, outside resources to analyze this with respect to school start times or possibly other future, further efficiencies, I think it's always a good idea to have an outside lens, somebody who, there are several companies that do this kind of work that are able to maintain lots of data and work in, you know, a number of other different communities and so have kind of a broader perspective and could bring some, you know, some comparatives for us that we couldn't do internally.
Sure. Of course, ma'am.
And it would require some budget resources to hire that kind of technical consultant capacity.
I maybe was under the impression that we had already decided to do that in this fiscal year, no? To have a consultant to help us when we think about some of the redistricting? Is that in our game plan?
Yes. So we just ran a process for consultants for redistricting, and we'll be bringing a recommendation to the building committee next week for those services.
Anything else? No? Dr. Sore?
I want to thank Mr. Collins for the report. I hope that those watching found it helpful to sort of break down what these costs are. And it's a big program as the community has grown, as the school district has grown, and given all the heavily regulated elements of it, it's an example of, you know, mandated program that we need to provide. Some of it's not mandated, as you're mentioning, but although logistically would be challenging to transport kids or have kids get to school without providing something, some of that beyond the mandate. And unfortunately, a lot of it is an unfunded mandate in the sense that the busing to Aspen Technical High School is, in theory, supposed to be fully reimbursed by the state, and it's a very small percentage each year. And, you know, you've heard in the past from Representative Kane that she has both been a champion of keeping that line item for reimbursement just in the budget at all, because sometimes it's been zeroed out in some initial phases of the state budget, but also she's filed legislation that if the state is not providing that level of reimbursement that it is supposed to for those, to allow school districts to then treat students the same as other students who are being transported in districts and be able to require a transportation fee as a matter of equity and fairness. And we appreciate that work on, that she's been providing on our behalf. In terms of some of the other elements that have come forward, you know, a number of years ago, we wouldn't be talking about mandated homeless transportation or foster care transportation. That's not to say those aren't good things and obviously providing stability in children's lives who have been changed by the upheaval of those kinds of situations. But the state inspector general a few years back found that the homeless transportation law was an unfunded mandate and that the legislature's done some work to provide some reimbursement that's varied over the years, but it's not the full amount by any stretch. So it's something that, again, to Dr. McGee's points, it puts pressure on the local budget in ways that may, don't have to do with other increases that we have to bear relative to inflationary costs, contracts, but just year over year, depending on what the state does provide us, it can change the level of pressure on the appropriated school department budget. So we'll continue to monitor it closely, appreciate the work that Mr. Collins does budgetarily on that. And then also, of course, when it comes down to it, it's a service, like all that we do, that ultimately comes down to human interaction. And I just want to thank the drivers who do, through AA Transportation, work for us each day in providing safe transportation to and from school and to AA as an organization for working as our partner to make that work. And that's been, it's been a fruitful partnership over the years, been working with them as a vendor. But we'll, again, bring some more specific information relative to the fee piece next week, and we will talk about some options for you, and then at the subsequent meeting after that, ask you to set the fee for next year.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll have, Dr. Sore will present the fiscal year 2021 strategic priorities budget report.
As the hours are drawing late, I will try to be efficient with my time. And the first slide I have here actually talks about efficiency, and the famous business consultant Peter Drucker, thinker, talks about, you know, efficiency is doing things right, but effectiveness is doing the right things. And when we talk about budget, we're creating a plan to fund, what we try to do is do the right things for students to maximize their learning and create the best school district that we can. As I prevented last time, we're talking about a series of decisions that we make, represents an organization's values, but I'm highlighting here, of course, it also represents its priorities for achieving its mission. Our mission, of course, is to prepare kids for a 21st century world, appreciate our democratic tradition and desire to continue to learn throughout life. And you, as a school committee, have approved and charged the school district with four major strategic priorities to, that we're working on through 2022, and that's what has been guiding our work over the last few years. So again, you know, what's the same next year about our budget? Well, there's not going to be enough revenue to meet our budget needs because we have this structural funding dilemma that we face as a community. That's the same. What's different, one like this year, but unfortunately many previous years, the status quo budget of just what we have now won't be sustainable due to the magnitude of several cost drivers. And when I presented the budget to you back in January, we described what those were. But this evening, I want to talk a little bit about what else is different about next year. Well, we won't have new appropriated budget resources to further invest in strategic priorities, which we're able to do in the current year and is making an important difference in many ways. So any investment that we need to make in strategic priorities next year will have to come from either alternative funding outside of the school department appropriated budget, whether that's grants or partnerships or something of the like, or by shifting existing funding within the appropriated budget. So we'll need to prioritize. We'll be prioritizing when we make potential budget reduction recommendations to you. And when we do that work, the leadership team will be doing that analysis. It's already begun. We need to consider, what's the beneficial impact on students of the recent strategic investments we've made? As opposed to what, you know, some might look at as sort of a simple last-in, first-out approach, but that wouldn't necessarily align with what our strategic priorities are, just as when you're thinking about a business or you're thinking about your household budget, over time, there are things that are going to change. You know, my wife and I are raising three children. Now they're coming upon college age. What we're shifting in terms of budgetary is very different than what we were budgeting when they were toddlers. So there's things that evolve depending on what's happening with the organization and what your priorities are as an organization. In your report, there is a table that indicates what the appropriated budget was, what it's projected for next year, what the difference would be, just to maintain the status quo budget. We know we won't receive that a lot of funding. But as far as strategic investments, last year, within the school department budget, we were able to invest about $775,000 in things to improve the school districts in ways that align with our priorities. Next year, there's none of that in the appropriated budget recommendation. Additionally, last year, we were able to, whether it was through grant money or partnerships, invest $560,000 in, again, strategic work that we're trying to advance our priorities. And that's a TBD. We're, I know Ms. Clouder is working hard on a couple of different grant pieces, as well as our special education department. Dr. Lazard is working with a variety of groups around alternative funding sources and potential partnerships, but right now, we don't have anything concrete that we can share. We're hopeful, we'll be able to do something there, but that unfortunately, there are things that we just don't qualify for because of the socioeconomic status of our community. So in summary, there won't be enough funding to maintain our status quo. That's unfortunate, but that's a reality that we face. There won't be enough funding in the appropriated budget to add new strategic investments, of course, as a result. And if we recommend potential cost reductions, we really need to carefully consider what our strategic priorities are. So I thought it was important, as just an initial follow-up to the budget presentation, to talk about that, since last year was the first time we sort of bifurcated the process to look at what's our status quo budget and then where can we make these strategic investments on top of that to advance the work that we need to do. And I'm happy to take any questions or hear any comments from the school committee because this is something we need to consider as we move forward into the process. this is something we need to consider as we move forward into the process over the coming weeks and months.
Jason?
I just, a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank the superintendent. I appreciate you taking the time and care to single out this topic. I think it's important, not only for us, but I think it's important for the community to hear that this is the situation we're in. One of the things that's really positive about our strategic priorities is that they actually, in my opinion, very genuinely reflect what it is the community would like to see of Shrewsbury Public Schools. The process that we went through to develop them in conjunction with A Portrait of a Graduate, they were not developed in a vacuum. Our strategic priorities very much are in alignment with what residents of this community expect of Shrewsbury Public Schools in the coming years. And so when we talk about not having the resources to make progress towards our strategic priorities, that's not just the five of us sitting here unable to check a box in some bureaucratic thing, you know, or a portal show we didn't achieve a goal. What we're talking about is having or not having the resources for Shrewsbury Public Schools to be what residents of this community want and expect it to be. So that's just my comment. And again, I appreciate the superintendent for making a point of singling out this topic.
These are, I guess I agree with Jason, and I think the only other thing to say is gray zone decisions are always the very hardest. It would be nice and easy if we had things that were necessary and things that were not necessary, things that were affordable and things that were completely unaffordable. But we're making, we're going to be making all these decisions in the gray zone, and we also have to think about unintended consequences with almost everything, every decision we make, because sometimes another domino falls when you don't expect it. So it's going to take a lot of planning, and it's not going to be easy. And the right decision is probably going to live in a space where everybody's a little uncomfortable.
Lindsay?
I guess I'm just starting to think through how to do this and how to do it in a way that I certainly don't want last in, first out. That doesn't seem thoughtful and inappropriate. My fourth grader tells me, I think I've already told the superintendent this, that his brother was the last one, was in the last year of second grade health and the last year of fourth grade health. And he said, "Am I ever going to get health?" And he sort of, he's very happy to try me whenever he can. He said, "Don't you people care about health of kids?" And I said, "No, thank you." But his point is well taken, right? That we had to make choices at some point along the line, and clearly this year, we're going to have to make even more of them. And some, I guess I'm wondering if it's, as a simple early cut, sort of there's the impact on students, and there's sort of high-impact and lower-impact items, and then there's impact on the budget. And how do we, in a four quadrant, think about these things? And does that in any way help us figure out what is a lower impact on student? That doesn't mean it's not a lower impact on staff, right? When I think about what our goal is, and our goal might be to provide education to our students, but, you know, impact on their educational services, and then thinking about what are the things that are, while maybe lower impact on the students have a big impact on our budget. And many of those, I imagine, actually, we have to do, and so they're not as movable, but how do we, how do we begin to sort this for ourselves and make meaningful distinctions, even though I agree we're in gray? But if we can figure out how to justify the difficult decisions that have to come our way.
Yeah, I appreciate talking about this topic now, because it's not just the next fiscal year, it's the one after that, too. You have to look, you know, further ahead. You're not going to be able to solve a problem without having the discussion about it, so I appreciate that we're doing it now. I think the, also the challenge with alternative funding is, you know, that's what we're left with. It isn't, it's temporary, right? If we're lucky to achieve that status, it's not something we can count on. I mean, it's no different than what we saw with, you know, the various fees related to busing and the funding there and the grant funding. It's not, you know, it's not sustainable. You know, we'd be fortunate to go that route, but it's time to start thinking creatively, you know, and it's, yeah, some tough decisions ahead, so.
Yeah, I like the fact that you brought up, you know, the notion that somebody may want to have last in, first out, and I think that would not be wise. We have to take a holistic look at this business and what are the priorities that we need to do in order to provide educational services to students? And there may be some priority shifting that will have to happen just because of the nature of the budget, or things have changed over time. So I think it is good to look that way. It's unfortunate that we can't move forward, because as Jason said, these are community, parents in the community want these strategic investments, but we're just not able to afford to do them at the same pace. And then when I look at funding from other sources, thank goodness we're doing that, because we're able to add to the budget in ways that we weren't able to in the past. But I do think we have to be very careful how those dollars are used if they're not renewable, to make sure that isn't something that transfers over to the appropriated budget. So thank goodness we're doing it, but we have to be strategic in how we do that. But thank you. I think it's something the community needs to know, because priorities, I think, is going to be the, kind of the buzzword as we move through this budget cycle. So thank you.
Anything else on that?
Thank you. We have our meeting minutes from our school committee workshop held on January 15th, 2020, and the school committee meeting held on January 22nd, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, we can have those marked as accepted as distributed, and we do not need to go into executive session this evening. So if there's nothing further, ask for a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wedske?
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun?
Aye.
Miss Hefner?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.